Good evening, we'll call the meeting no order. This evening, Councilor Hall will lead us in the pledge and say the invitation.
Good evening, we'll call the meeting no order. This evening, Councilor Hall will lead us in the pledge and say the invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for your goodness and mercy, we thank you for your faithfulness. And what I ask, that we just, that you would help us and guide us tonight as we make decisions for our community. We ask all this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Before we approve the agenda, I would like to make a motion to add an item, item I eight. Have a review of the meeting that staff and I had with KDOT last week. So I'll make that motion, I entertain a second. Okay, I made the motion, keep the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
That makes the motion.
I second.
Krista seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Citizen comments? We have three minutes time now for citizens to speak if they wish. This is the time for us to listen, we won't respond to comments. But I will open citizen comments, you're invited to come up and speak with potential.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to come introduce myself. Just want to let everybody know, I'm Senator Chase Blasey, I represent Colwich and out in northwest Wichita in the Kansas Senate. I represent District 27. And I just thought it important to come introduce myself to all of you as Dan Kirshen is currently your state senator, and he is retiring after 12 years. He represents District 26, which Goddard is currently encompassing. But his district and my district have kind of been merged due to redistricting and the boundaries being drawn. And so, if elected, reelected here in the upcoming election, I'll be your state senator. And I just wanted to kind of just let you see my face and everybody in the audience who I know is following local government and watching online, that hopefully I'll be your advocate. I just want you guys to know, I'm here for you guys, here to advocate on, I know transportation dollars is always something we're always looking at, and I've been working with some members of your city council and government to try to allocate some dollars, get some state transportation dollars to Goddard as you guys continue to grow. It's a new city District 26, just for everyone's perspective, it's more or less the western half of Central County, going from Anheuser to Colwich, all the way down to the county line on Sumner County, Clearwater, Viola, all the way over to Hayesville, and then a lot of the west Wichita. So, I think almost geographically, it's half of Central County, about 73,000 constituents. But, just want to know, I'm here for you guys, I know we kept in the loop pretty close with the Sarban issue you guys are facing. I know it's a challenge, I know the state has some obligations to uphold on that end, and I know we'll work together, hopefully resolve that issue. But I just wanted to introduce myself in three minutes' time, and just let you all know, we'll hopefully be in touch. I need to sign my name, is that right, Mr. Mayor?
Please. The official record.
There you go.
Thank you for stopping in soon.
Yeah, appreciate it. Appreciate all the things you've done for us this last six months, and you're willing us to listen, this was...
Yeah, feel free to reach out anytime, and Craig has my information, so feel free to reach out. And I'll invite you all to PICA for Local Government Day, usually in January. And anybody who's in the audience or watching online who'd like to come up to the State House, you're welcome, I'd love to show you around and have you watch state government. Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else this evening? If not, we'll close citizen comments. We long to explore case communication conflicts of interest. When I read this this time, I'm going to state, I don't have any conflicts right now, it's first, so I don't forget. Because when you read something, sometimes it feels like I'm reading it for you guys, it doesn't matter. This time, I'd like to give City Council a chance to clear any conflicts of communication they have that might influence or whether you consider today's agenda items impartial. None that I do, I do. We don't have any appointments, confirmations, or nominations. I'd seek motion to approve the consent agenda, item G.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
That makes a motion. Krista seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. No unfinished business. Move the item I one. Who does that bring to that?
So, this agenda item relates to the beginning of assessment proceedings on a number of projects. I was thinking about this the other day, this is something we would have talked about during the council orientation on snow day in January. Had a process, and this is the first time that this council will have to go through it. So, you have seen a number of petitions and then authorizing resolutions that lead to temporary notes and projects moving forward. And this is what happens when projects are done. It's time to proceed through the assessment proceedings I mentioned, and it's statutory, a lot of rules. The first thing is that, once the projects are complete and you know all of the costs that are to be included, you approve a statement of final cost. The way this is typically done, it's the way the city does things, the last cost to be known is final interest on temporary notes that are going to the church. A couple of temporary note issues that mature later this year, and that's kind of what's triggering this. So we need to get through assessment proceedings, calculate assessments, have a preemptive period for assessments, and then finalize a sizing of bond issues or a bond issued to pay off those temporary notes. So that's kind of the big picture of background. I'm going to skip that bit real fast if I could, except I will point out it's Cloverly Farm addition Phase Two and Phase Three, Arbor Creek addition Phase Two, various infrastructure projects. To serve those in the temporary notes that will be paid off for Series 21 dash, 2021 dash two, 2021 dash three, and 2022 dash one. I mentioned, by statute, you approve a statement of final cost. You also will update the phase of the assessment rule, establish a hearing date, authorize the giving of notice to effective property owners of that giving. So, project number one, these are just numerical, which you, based on original resolution numbers. Project number one is Cloverly Farm addition Phase Two Water Distribution System Improvement. Final cost, $213,460.7 cents. I'll mention now that this information comes from city staff, primarily Matt, who have generated this information. Brett Chogren, the city's financial advisor, takes this information as final interest that I mentioned, expected bond costs of issuance, underwriting discount, all the things that will go into the final bond size to get to the statement of final cost. Brett and I spent some time comparing those final costs to the original authorizing resolutions. Are they within the estimated costs that we set for? Do the lot descriptions match, you know, proposed assessment rule match what were in those original authorized documents? So that's the background we get to this point. Are these costs within what was estimated? Do we still have the same benefit district, the same lines, and those sorts of things? So, again, I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, but that's how we got to these statements of final cost. Project number two, Cloverly Farm addition Phase Two Street Improvements. Final cost, $464,457.7 cents. Phase Two Sanitary Sewer, final cost, $135,472.48. Still Arbor Creek addition Phase Two Form Water Sewer, final cost, $146,815.3. Project five, paving improvements in Arbor Creek addition Phase Two, final cost, $381,677.4 cents. And then the last Arbor Creek addition Phase Two Project Water Distribution System, final cost, $136,429.7. Project number seven, Cloverly Farm addition, Phase Three Street Improvements, final cost, $336,448.69. Phase Three Waterline Improvements at Cloverly Farms, $164,836.7 cents. So, again, we took that information, and this would have been included in your packet, and I understand it's lengthy, but those final costs have been sort of run through the math of what did the original authorizing documents provide in terms of what lots get assessed, what's the method of assessment, is there any city at large portion? Sometimes the city will pick up an oversized cost online or something, and then all is worked through in the proposed assessment rules. So if you look at that, it's sort of tabular, goes on several pages and shows each lot what the assessment is for that particular project. You may have a lot that's going to get an assessment for street sewer, water, drainage, all of the infrastructure. So that's how we calculated that assessment. And that's important. As I mentioned, you will call for a hearing, if you act on this time. At the hearing, the purpose of the hearing is to allow effective property owners to talk about whether the assessments have been calculated correctly. Occasionally, somebody will be upset that the project occurred at all in the first place, and that, that should be saved. And you know, that, that's not what the purpose of the hearing is. It's to make sure everything has been calculated and done in accordance with those original documents. So, again, that's what's before you tonight with the statements of final cost, the long assessment rules. Financials, no direct costs to the city other than you're going to publish some things, mail some things, and then have a general obligation bond issued, which is a full-fledged credit obligation of the city. Permanently finance the improvements that I just mentioned, is pay off those temporary notes. So the bonds will be payable first from special assessments, and if not so paid, from general obligation bonds of the city. One of the nice things about the city's typical process for temporary notes and special assessments is it's usually three years, maybe three years plus, before we get to the temporary note maturity. And that allows lots to sell. Where there's a danger to the city, I mentioned this full-fledged credit obligation, is that you don't have disparate ownership. Maybe you have 100 lots that are being assessed and all owned by one developer. Again, with this big assessment bill coming up later in the year, or next year, or whenever it is, and so there's some risk of nonpayment in that regard. When phases and developments are built out and you have lots of different owners, there may be an occasional delinquency or nonpayment taxes, but it's, you know, it's mixed in with a lot of other payments and taxes. And so that's, that's, again, a way that the city can minimize its risk and knowing that these developments are essentially built out and you're moving on to the different things. You have lots of different property owners that will be paying for these special assessments. Legal, I prepared, as I mentioned, all of the documents before you. Worked with city staff and Brett Chogren, the financial advisor, on some of the financial calculations and statements of final cost. So, unfortunately, it's, it is a long motion. We tried to take care of this in one action because it's not a resolution. You're just approving the statement of cost and saying, hey, we need to get notice and have a hearing. So, the motion is sort of five-part. You're approving the statement of final cost, proposed assessment rules, the notice of public hearing, and then the form of notice of public hearing and statement of cost proposed to assess tickets made. You establish July 15th, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. as the hearing date in time. You direct the city clerk to publish the notice of public hearing and the additional to the newspaper, not much like the news prior. And four, also direct the mailing of the notice to the property owners. And then five is simply that all these documents are available or filed with the city clerk. So I'll stop there, it's, it's a lot of information. But again, it, it's based on actions that were taken through you. This is the petition, this is the resolution, we've constructed the projects, what are our final costs, and let's run through the methodology that's called for in this authorizing documents.
Any questions? Hearing that, I entertain a motion to, for a long sentence of fine items.
So motion.
Keep making some motion.
I second.
Krista seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye's had it. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item, number I two, Mr. Curry.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, this is item I two, Engineering Services Agreement for Phase Two Rustic Creek. So, this background, Goddard Engineering Services Agreement, ESA, engineering work for Phase Two Rustic development, off in the 18th year of 2029. And ESA is required for each phase of development to cover engineering climate improvements. Goddard will be engineering friends of this development. There is really no analysis of this, which is just standard operating procedure. Costs associated with engineering service agreement will be assessed as a development charge for bond interest fund, legally through the form. It is recommended that the city council and mayor approve the engineering services agreement for Rustic Creek Phase Two. So every time we have a phase of development, we require an engineering services agreement from that engineering firm, which is representative of the developer, and they will charge their services to temporary notes, recover the cost, for making sure they comply with law standards that they decided to ask. Usually something we include in petitions, but we include it anytime, just prior to what's actually kind of charged with how it goes.
Any questions? Someone want to make a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to approve the Engineering Services Agreement for Rustic Creek Phase Two.
Brett makes a motion, second. All three seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I have a very motion. Storage shed. This is trans system. The storage shed will come later. That's my favorite item on this list.
This is, I know it's my favorite, but I'm bringing it, I think. I agree, it's a trans systems professional consulting agreement. Population growth, Sarban district visitors, new businesses, has a base number of vehicles traveling across the streets. The increased traffic and count is on difficult to maintain when entering the next season subdivisions, businesses, and there are often long wait times of traffic signals. The capital improvement program 2025 to 2034 addresses those roadway issues by improving several roads in Goddard. SaaS has identified six locations as areas of concern. The streets and the proposed improvements are listed below. 199 expansion from US 54 to 23rd Street. 183rd expansion from US 54 to Maple. 23rd Street expansion from 167th to 183rd, and then again from 183rd to 215th. And then Crown Drive extension, private drive to 23rd Street. And then 183rd Street expansion from US 54 to 23rd Street. Here is a map of new proposed streets, their locations within the city. We've got 183rd from Mary Kellogg to Maple here. 183rd from Kellogg to 23rd here. And then we've got our various sections of 23rd. That would be the proposed Crown Drive expansion, and of course, 199. The initial step in approving and remedying this issue is to analyze the proposed roads and develop concepts for improvement. Staff is proposing hiring trans systems to assist the city on developing and understanding each of those six street locations. Standing outside, and to be used in 2024, 2025, that's 2025 to 2034 CIP. If we hire trans systems, they will create a high level analysis and concept of the six locations. The concepts will estimate the number of lanes and possible lane configurations, intersection heights, and sidewalks for those streets. Concepts will take into account potential driveway needs, public utility conflicts, and large drainage structure locations such as a creek or defined drainage bed. Final deliverable, if this is approved and has final deliverable, will be a report based on the analysis of the six locations. And they anticipate the services outlined can be completed within a week of our acceptance of the proposal. So it's pretty quick turnaround. Fees for described services are $19,500. If approved, that cost will be allocated to capital improvement on street improvements, capital projects, engineering, and design. So if you have any questions.
Brett, could I just add to your presentation a quick, so on Crown Drive, it uses the word private. Trans systems inadvertently included that word in there. It's not a private drive, that's a publicly platted road, and it would be a public, public road extension down to 23rd, as some call it Pawnee. So just want to make sure it's not a private road. The other thing is, is that this is kind of a first step of a two-step process when it comes to the roads. Trans systems put together preliminary concept designs, and we have staff capability in-house to then put estimates together based off of those designs. Once we have those estimates, then we can kind of get our 10-year CIP more fully baked. This is one, this is probably the biggest component of our 10-year CIP, the roads and costs and the amount of projects. So getting through this part of it would kind of help us move that along a little bit faster.
Any other questions? Questions? You all quiet?
Mr. Mayor, I'd also add that, you know, staff has met internally, we've kind of ranked these roads. I believe the list you saw there was in how we had prioritized them, but we'll present that to the council once we have the estimates and those kinds of things, and let you guys either validate or modify our suggested prioritization of these. And hopefully, we can get them all done within 10 years. There's a lot of the financial analysis that we need to go into that to be able to perfectly fund this size of projects, but we've crossed that bridge, no pun intended, whenever we get there.
So I do think it's important that we have a plan here. This is part of, this is part of managing the growth of our community. And then I think this allows us time to seek funding. There's KDOT sources, WOMPO sources, and additional funding. We share a lot of these roads right now with the county. Road portion of one of those roads with the city of Wichita. So, I mean, there's a lot of stakeholders in this, but I think this sets us in a direction that will help us manage the road. Maybe someday, there'll, there'll be any complaints about traffic. Can't wait for that day. I'll just save my glasses half-full on that.
Burke, you're going to mention something additional. I don't think the mayor heard you.
Well, no, you're absolutely right. And we've got subdivisions coming in, you know, on Main Street, we're going down 23rd. We've gotten all over the place, so these are going to be more highly traveled than they are. We've got the Sandbox Two opening up. So it's, it's, it's a big deal. If, if there are additional questions or comments, it's recommended by the city, it's written in the city council, please bring that for trans systems to provide professional consulting services for the Goddard capital improvement program, 2025, 2034.
I'll leave the motion to approve the trans systems consulting services agreement for $19,500.
Second.
Brett, seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Oh, this is the, this is the I board, the city, all the storage shed. Again, just like the last one, as we grow, the number of documents, number of things going on in the city increases. And this is a, this is a situation where staff is running out of storage space for documents that we must keep for a certain amount of time to get statutory law, but we got to, I don't know if I'm overstate it, I'm over turning. As it is, you have a larger party to keep many documents on file for several years. In the past, documents are stored in the library, city hall, and the community center. But now, with a lot more programs on, library, state family community center, we've lost some space there. And everybody's competing, you know, for the, for the reduced amount of space, so, for storage. So it's making it difficult for us to find space for these. To increase that space, we're proposing the addition of a storage outbuilding. The proposed storage will consist of a climate-controlled 12-foot by 60-foot wooden shed on concrete pad. It will have a sidewalk going to it. The proposed location is on the south side of city hall, behind the air conditioner, so it would be on the, on the east half of the south side of city hall. Have a sidewalk run up to this, to the existing sidewalks, so staff don't have to walk in and smell or whatever. And it would like to be, it'll be climate-controlled by AC, will have heat humidifiers and those that have paper space. We received multiple bids through proportion of proposed projects. Best bids are listed here. The shed, best bid was Als Ice Shed Company. I chose the best bid on that month of low bid because they offered the best product that's going to be the most sturdy for what we need. We're most confident in this one, keeping weather out, withstanding heavy winds and things like that. Concrete pad, NLC Construction, that's a small local company, and he is low, but he was low by $5, so that works. The electric, that was the electric LLC, we've had excellent luck with the city with them, using it for a lot of those type of jobs. And then we just went out to the various different stores and looked at a climate-controlled AC and heat humidifiers, and Home Depot came back with the best, you know, that's $827. So the total price of this shed, putting in concrete, everything, is $11,842. And if that's approved, it will be allocated General Fund Administration, capital outlay suppression.
Reason I'm excited about this is Craig said I could put a card table in there and have a office.
Mr. Mayor, if I could blow you up for one second.
You may.
You know, I'm going to start sharing things like this more often as we kind of move forward into the near future. But council is going to start seeing more stopgaps like this on the agenda. And the reason being is, you know, city hall is out of space. We don't have a single office available for additional employees. Yet our community continues to grow at a rapid pace. Our closets are the same situation. Our police department, same situation. We're out of offices, we're out of space. Our library, if you've been to, they can't have the, some of their programs over there anymore because they're just pulling out of room. The basement, we utilize for different things, several of our civic groups, but it's quickly running out of space. And so what we're starting to see here is some of the growth pressure on the facility side of things. We've seen it at the staff level, we've seen it financially in some other areas. But the facilities challenge is starting to rear its head now. So this is merely a stopgap. I mean, we're, we're not only going to keep files over there, we've got some other solutions to address the file situation coming up later in the agenda as well. This is going to be other miscellaneous items that need to home, things we can't just get rid of. And we've done a pretty good job of purging as much miscellaneous items as we can. But you're going to see more stuff like this. I don't know what other solutions we have available, but we try very hard to mitigate having to do property tax increases for things like facilities. Because, you know, facilities, they don't provide other levels of service that the community might find as satisfying, such as an expanded road or a new park or, you know, those kinds of things. They're not the quote-unquote second projects, but they become necessary. So we'll, hopefully we can come up with a few ways to buy us some more time. But this conversation is going to be becoming more and more about facility needs and financing those needs. So just something to keep in your mind, it's on the horizon. You're going to see things in our ten-year CIP that discuss facilities. Luckily, we have room, we continue to have the lowest property tax mill levy in Cedric County for cities of our class, our size. We have the lowest utility rates as well. And so we have a little room to be able to address some of these things without impacting the wallet too much. But it's going to cost a little bit. Hopefully we can demonstrate trust and show folks where those dollars are going. So I just wanted to share that, I think when these items come up, it's important to touch on those challenges that we're going to be facing.
Is there a specific amount of time we've got to keep these records and what records? I mean, is there a time when you disposal or maybe transfer them to microphone or something?
There is, and there's going to be an agenda item coming up to address that as well. But yes, we do have retention schedules for certain items. Some of them are permanent, but those will be able to be transferred to electronic files, which is what I'm going to be proposing coming up.
That's going to be a job in itself?
Yes.
I mean, that's all what was going on, community sitting here, that's all I saw. You know, so, okay, great.
So, any further questions?
What's the, what's the timeline look like?
We approve, what? Probably be three weeks. The concrete guy's ready to go, you know, weather works with us and we get that down. Get it cured. The shed guy, we have used him a lot, he's actually a daughter resident. And he moves us to the hospital best, which is very nice. He did the community center shed. He's been on sheds for well houses.
This is going to be mounted to the concrete, right? It ain't going to be one of those?
Yes, this is going to be mounted on the concrete. Yes, it will.
And what are you going to do, keep the mayor out of there?
That's not my job.
Mr. Mayor, I want to add real quick, because I forgot to mention this facility during my diatribe, but it's probably the most immediate concern is the public workshop. And it's on the front end of our CIP. And it's, this is a fifty, sixty-year-old metal tin building. You guys have been in it during council orientation. It's to a point that it's the end of its useful life. So I don't want to forget to mention the things probably on the higher end of priorities when I'm talking about those things, so.
They're going to have gutters?
They're going to have gutters.
Yeah.
We probably should put some on, I guess. Keep it competitive enough, so that's a great idea. We did not add that in this, but we did have to do it.
Yeah, we definitely need to put the gutter down there.
Do we need cabinets? Counter tops?
Just gutters. You know, all you need is some metal shelves, file boxes.
We could probably build them.
You get a picture of this thing?
I do not, of course I do not. I didn't take a pic, get a picture of it and we left it with the sheds.
It's going to be like what, paint or?
We can paint it any color we want, see, that's the thing, it comes primed and we can paint it whatever we want. And I guess that's something, once the city hall gets what the consensus is, once some of the mayor.
A dark game.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I, I think what, what our city administrator said is really true. And what I'm excited about that CIP is we're not only just looking at streets, but we're looking at really a vision of what city's going to look like going forward. And so in addition to the library, a place for the police station, and maybe a meeting room for our council meetings and also for city core, which frees up half the space in this building for other offices and things. The, the things and decisions we make, you know, really get carried through in a certain direction in the community for the next twenty, twenty-five years. So it's a neat time to be here. And this is a process of managing growth in a certain direction that people appreciate. But it's well planned and well thought out, so. And I do have a card table in there if I need to have a place to write.
We can handle that administrative, but I think.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the shed, let's get moving.
Make a motion to approve the shed, not to exceed eleven thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars.
Team's made a motion?
Second.
We're in seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Council, not the fun stuff, Roger.
CFO Matt Wong, one of his last performances for the city of Dallas.
Alright, so we're going to get into twenty twenty-five budget right now. First, first thing we usually do is enterprise funds there are easiest to forecast revenue for. Explain to a new council because enterprise funds are what they, what they have to be operating on. Revenue should function the operation. First, talk about water fund. Department goals, provide safe, reliable, affordable, best for community water service. Same way you can do it. This, this utility is, sole purpose is to provide water for the safer services. Challenges, maintaining systems at different structure ages. Elevate or evaluating the, you know, capabilities of our, not just our water tower, but our other infrastructure as well. Plan, future needs, example, developing secondary well field, developing connections, connections to rural water support we're working on. And I really love corporate building, the funds, cash balance, improve the utility's future operating position. And even more importantly, restore reserves. Twenty twenty-five budget assumptions, these are things that I prepared this budget based on these factors being taken for granted. The new water rate structure that we're going to be presenting at the next council meeting. Maintain the low water bill for our base rate and low usage customers, but it does increase the amount of the bill that does go onto the use portion. So currently we have an extremely low per thousand gallon charge that we put on the bill. The budget, with these new rate structure, we'll be able to restore transactions in our utility. Over the past two years, we spent about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on well repairs, which basically cut that reserve fund in half. We are not at an emergency level. We have about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in there, so we can have a couple of incidents where we need to spend a lot of money. I don't know wealth, but other major emergencies that happen, we would be safe to do so. But two of those would deplete that fund. So we need to, as quickly as possible replenish that fund. And I'm proposing a large transfer in twenty twenty-five to save to do that. Other transfers from the water budget will be transfer to water reserve fund, I guess, equivalent reserve fund. We like the equivalent reserve fund to be funded by all of our operating funds. So general fund, street fund, water, sewer fund, all contribute to that equivalent reserve fund because they all use equipment. You're going to see later, the police is going to use a portion of the funds from equipment reserve to pay for fleet purchase. But when Brooke purchased vehicles, we paid for that out of the equipment reserve fund. That gets funded by all three of his operating funds, so it makes sense to do that. Finally, bond and interest fund, we transfer money in there from both water and sewer because our, we use that fund to make debt payments. And we have the, for water fund, we have the ground storage bank for the purple tank over by the water tower. And we have a six-day supply line that runs along the trail that connects to our wells and coordinate building. And that's where we're going to, and that's where we can get those payments on that debt fund. On the wastewater side, again, we transfer out of that into the sewer replacement reserve fund, the same thing with water fund, only on the wastewater side. We also have historically high fund balance in this fund. As we, over the last couple of years, we've been transferring, transferring out some of that fund out into our capital improvement fund, which both can be used for large projects. Sewer projects, or it can be used on other projects because ideally you want your water and sewer utilities, which are money-making utilities, to be able to fund other city services. So if it's not making a transfer to general fund, we'd like to see it make a transfer into capital improvement fund so that it's adding along to the other projects that's going to be asked. So it's not all to rely on tax revenue to make those, to make those transfers in. So again, so the budget assumptions, this is the, this is basically a comparison of our peer communities, water utilities, what they charge and versus what we are at the bottom. The current rates are these right here, the bottom, it's going to be something close to this that we're going to present in a couple of weeks. This is just, I want you to take a measure here to the average of our peer cities for all these categories versus what we're at now. We're proposing a slightly lower base rate than the average of our peer community. And this does include, you know, cities like Andover has a very low base rate compared to some of these others. But Andover also is, you know, they're not actually, Andover citizens are paying Wichita, that's because they're, they charging Wichita directly. Wichita provides water to Andover, so Wichita fills them directly. Wichita, we have some ones that are much lower, we have some that are higher. So the average out of about twenty-six seventy-one, and we're proposing going to nineteen thirty-eight twenty-six, just for the base rate. Which for us, not all your business, but for us, that includes the first two thousand gallons water use as well. So that is included in that base rate. So that's why you see over here for base customer, what they pay for, the base rate includes that first two thousand gallons. It goes up, we're proposing these per usage changes, currently we charge a dollar. This is specifically for residential customers, not commercial customers. So you'll have, when we present the, when we present the full rate structure at the next meeting, you'll see what the increase we're proposing for commercial and other non-residential customers, we're out to be full sales. So like I said, we're proposing tripling that to four dollars every cent a gallon. But again, that doesn't hit until you get after your two thousandth gallon. So when you go from four thousand gallons, that's where you're going to see a more significant increase in your water bill. And obviously you're going up to eight or fifteen thousand, which is much higher. We don't really have many customers that hit those usage numbers except for our glorious mayor, our blue pool last week, or last week. But again, you're not doing that every month, so we're not going to, we're not going to.
My grandkids want to be in the water.
So this is just a breakdown of revenues for water fund. Far column to the left here, this is actual numbers for the last year. This column here is what our current budget is. This is what our estimate for how that budget is doing, so, and this is the revenue side. This is what we're going to propose for the budget year, this is what we're projecting out to the year twenty twenty-six. And again, this, what this column here does include, the proposed rate. And again, so if we, we end up not doing the rate, basically we do a different rate increase, we'll have to, you know, probably not the same cost. I just wondered if the best case scenario, based on one operation, if that is. And you see where it's hitting is directly here, sales in the city, this is sales for in-city customers, which makes up the maximum. We have done pretty good on cap fees, both last year and this year as well. We're actually projecting above what we, that budgeted, which is good. And yeah, I'm just going to hold that number going forward because hopefully we keep getting active on this, but I don't know if I still can do this. Pretty safe already, so. Everything else is brought out more than we expected as far as new service fees, free mechanics, et cetera. And so on revenue side, or the department venture side, administration, this is not only our, a third of our well of worst personnel, but also a quarter of our administrative personnel cost come out of this fund or paid for this fund. And then also, this is going to be really more administrative type expenses, not necessarily operational things. Here's where we get into operational, water transmission, so this is going to cover basically everything from the wells to the tower. And we don't have very many increases here, there's an increase for some contractual costs, fuel, what repairs the utilities, et cetera. Treatment, this is our treatment operation coordinator basically, and you know, we have some increased costs for chemicals, most of that additional increases. Transfers, this is where we're going to basically essentially try to rebuild that fund balance of the water reserve fund. And here, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to do anything we can into restore this year. So we have a little bit, we've projected a little bit of additional cash for transferring in this year for the water reserve fund. But we're increasing that twice as much as additional hundred fifty thousand dollars next year, which would, you know, assuming we don't even make the budget out of home, more than double our current fund balance. Also notice here, what I talked about earlier about making those debt payments, this hundred fifty thousand dollars, we'll get the bondage, so that's the credit. And then we're hoping to restore the transfer in equipment to, so each major fund is contributing for the, for at least some of the payment. And this is just a total of everything across the entire fund. You know, currently we're, and it's been ending your about half a million of the fund balance and it'll grow for next year, based on having needed. Waste water fund.
Matt, do we want to pause and see what kind of feedback you might have from council on water before we go on to here?
Questions? It would have been nice if they had lowered the rates from the last time.
So I'll speak to that a little bit. What happened last time was, we had refinanced our debt essentially for the water and sewer funds. And it was, Brad, probably to be interested, but you know, we had historically low interest rates combined with the fact we were about to hit a threshold on our sewer facility debt service that was going to pull the payment up significantly. So we were able to get some cost savings over the entirety of the debt by refinancing. And there's some room to bring the water down a little bit, and which had been the desire of the council. Also at the time, well, probably by that time, we were, other communities are pretty much caught up to us. Historically, we have had high water sewer combined rate and we, you know, there's a lot of criticism from people for that. But in the interim time, and I'll be up here, communities you saw, caught up to us, especially on the water side as far as what they're charging for water. And we are, we are low compared to them now. And they've made up for it on the wastewater side as well. So there was always a push to lower the bills, but that's, I mean, we're historically low right now. And we've seen the impact that's had on fund health. I mean, sewer funds is going to be fine, we have, you know, it's higher fee. The water fund, we consistently had, had to lower transfers, we'd had to consistently defer maintenance and other things because there was not the revenue generated to support those necessary things to do. And again, we had this pretty significant reserve fund balance, which was great, but we've had to spend a lot of that down, especially with the two big hits we took to the wells in the last couple of years.
So does this also include maybe any funds that we would use to tie into rural artists or kind of for?
So again, the additional revenue generated, we ideally would use for that time. So, but we do, it'd be some of the reserves, or we can throw the capital line if we wanted to, to defer some of that transfer out. But yes, this would provide the ability to at least partially. But yes, this would provide the ability to at least partially go on that. Actually, I haven't seen the numbers on what that's a cost yet, but it's gonna be.
For material only, quarter million bucks. So that doesn't factor in engineering, design, administration.
But yeah, we've also, it should be included in the capital budgets, so we'll be able to take advantage of other fund sources for that as well. You know, we've got a pretty significant cash carryover in the general fund, but we're due to start transferring some of that into capital as we move forward, so that's, that's another, you know, source of revenue. Now, yeah, we have a lot of capital projects we wanna do, we have a lot of road projects we wanna do, we have a lot of park projects we wanna do, so everything's gonna be fighting for, you know, who gets, who gets the money for what, but this will be some of that.
I think it's necessary. I mean, like I said, a couple of back-to-back big problems.
I've only been concerned twice about our utilities. Once was probably about ten years ago, where we got down to a, about a three hundred, three hundred thousand dollar fund balance for our sewer fund, and it was, it was leading up to one of those big increases in debt service payment on the wastewater creative facility, was coming up in a couple of months. I'm like, hey, if we make this payment, we're not gonna have a lot of money left, anything left of this fund, so we had to do a, we had to, you know, do an emergency rate increase at that point, although, I mean, we're never gonna be insulted, it was just, it was gonna take away that buffer that we like to keep. We like to keep at least a sixty to ninety day operating reserve in our fund balance for all of our operations. And this is, and you know, again, it's a reserve fund, so it's not really, you know, in danger of anything, but I don't like seeing that fund balance being down as low as it has. It's not Brooke's fault every time the well break, but.
I would mention, you know, I've only been doing this for six years, and I've been a part of four emergency well repairs, and it's not because of improper maintenance or anything like that, we have maintenance schedules, but imagine the stress that those components are under, and Harland and Brooke can speak to that with much more wisdom than I can, but I would expect we're gonna have a hundred thousand probably in liability every few years as we have to replace expensive parts, pump motors, and pellets and things like that on these wells. We just had two back-to-back, so.
For some reason, for us, this seems to come in twos, and that's unfortunate. One nice thing is our application to reopen the perfection period for wells four and five is sitting on the desk in Manhattan at Ag waiting to be signed. So that's gonna give us a lot more pumping capacity from those, and we will run that as much as we need to.
And I'll point out too, you know, Brooke is proactive with this stuff. We have a, we have made this agreement with McGuire Iron or.
Tower.
The tower. And so it's not like we're just letting everything fall apart. We have a grit, a grip on the, you know, life cycle of our infrastructure, we have plans in place to take care of it, but you know, we would rather have a, we'd rather have this programmed into our operations rather than just hoping that we have money available if something goes aways.
And we have a sustainable portion for wastewater side. We're pretty good on that, right? As far as we just did the sludge thing.
As far as budget, yeah. You'll see here in a minute, you know, expenses have increased, but you know, we had steady, we had, we had really steady revenue there. And you know, every time we had a customer, every time we had a, we developed a radic customers. And on the wastewater side, so far, that's been a bigger benefit than on the water side because with water, yeah, we're, we're adding more customers, but we're also using more water, which is cutting into our ability to provide. Not that we're there yet, but again, we aren't ever closing that gap between what we are allowed to provide, what we can provide, so.
And I'm confident we can, we can go to ten thousand people with our plant the way it is. If it's running property properly, I'm a hundred percent confident we can go to that at least.
Brooke is, since Brooke started, that plant's a completely different operation, operating very efficiently, very effectively. He's got great staff over there now. You know, their costs have gone up, that sludge stuff is still giving me headaches, but I mean, it's, it was twelve hundred dollars a month for, now it's not, so.
It's, it's gone up, and unfortunately, it's still the, the most cost-effective option we have because all the competitors want us to pile that sludge in the bays for six months and then have them come in, and they want us to find the land to apply it to and everything, all they do is come in and apply it. Imagine six months' worth of cake in a bin in the heat and whatnot when we have homes within no shot? It would, it would be pleasant, so we've got probably the best option we can have out there.
Discussion about fees are difficult, and they come with much thought. We, we see, there's nothing for us to be gaining by decreasing the fees, other than what we need to provide safe, clean, free water, which is what our citizens expect, and this is what we think it's gonna take to be able to do that comfortably, so more on that will come at the next council meeting when you guys have an ordinance in front of you. So I encourage you to seek feedback, if you get questions, and you need the staff to help you provide responses, utilize us, that's what we're here for. We can show these numbers to anyone who wants to see them, we can show them where the emergency capital expenses have come from, so we're, we're here to help, and we're an open book when it comes to these things.
Can we get on this one?
Sure. You guys have the principal water, and we can come back, we serve that. Water and sewer separate, but tied, if you sort of speak, so they're all really part of the same thing. Revenue forecast, I have updated the, I have not updated this column yet because I've sold away a couple of things, particularly, and you're probably out there, why, and what we're gonna do to the water fund, because I have some scenarios if, if we decide to do something different on how we change the structure here as well, but for now, we're gonna show what we did last year. I think we're actually pretty much ahead of where we expected to be this year, so I'm gonna decide that next year, numbers actually will have increased from what I'm in this year, this year, but let's see here. Personnel, again, same thing. This is funded by, so two public works employees are a hundred percent paid out of this fund, the rest of them are paid a third a year for the admin, operation, and salary paid out of the cost center. No major changes there. We do have increased for transmission here because we're restoring mammal rehab program in general, but also back to new operations. Historically, when this fund was underperforming, we would only be able to do that mammal rehab every couple of years if we had sufficient fund balance in sewer reserve fund to do it. Brooke has gone back and dealt with them to restore that program, and so we're gonna be, we should be able to fund it now as operational. We're gonna do some after volume, and it's a regular thing, so we're hitting those, I don't know, how many a year are you?
Well, we hit about seven this year, we hit the most, the ones that really needed it, that were in, in bad shape, so we will, we'll hit as many as we can within budget for each year.
Treatment, this is, again, as we've, the cost associated with the plants, there was some, most, most of this increase is gonna be due to utility increases, electric, fuel, et cetera. And also, this does include, we're, we're budgeting to do more equipment replacement if stuff wears out over there, you know, replace, it's on a schedule, so we just hold that where we are. What we need to replace for each year. Again, transfers, I'm cutting the transfer next year to Equipment Reserve down by twenty-five thousand because we're gonna be totally good at water plants. Again, we transferred sewer reserve pretty well, we've got a very good fund balance there. We may be over four hundred thousand out of that in your, put in the capital improvement or maintain it as fund balance. Once I get a better idea of what water's gonna point, and then the top one, the transfer bond interest fund. So for this transfer for water and sewer, I'm gonna recalculate those because I'm pretty sure that with our, we should be able to, I mean, the, the amount of the funding will be the same, but I think, I think since we, we're gonna be altering the amount of the water feed, we'll be able to get more of a balance between water and sewer to make those transfers, so we have most of the water in the sewer fund, so, you know, we'll, we'll have five hundred three little lots when we go to, go to dot. And then here's just the bottom line for the entire fund, maybe the energy fund, or the energy fund balance, those are the. Are there any questions about the sewer operation?
Give me a very loud, Matt, appreciate it.
I really do. I'm gonna disagree with him.
You know, Matt, you've been here how many years now, sixteen, seventeen?
I don't remember.
Couple of few, but.
I blew that air, I'm sorry.
I love to change that, but I just wanna just personally thank you for your, your service to the community, and we're having a lunch in forty Wednesday, and the fund balances and the way the city's finances have been taken care of, and you've left us in, in great shape. We got money in reserves and things to do things in spite of the forty-two thirty-one, with a very small mill, I mean, we've been able to operate the city and are in a strong financial position. There are a lot of places when they go to look for a couple of police cars, they start scrambling, and, and you know, we got, there's planning and thought that's gone in over the years to provide funds, and you've been a big partner, and I just wanted to make a personal thank you. And always good to see a great case stay here, move on, and, and I just wish you all the best, because you know your next thing to have is.
Well, we only drove through this little place on our way to Colorado, I didn't know really anything about it, there was a stoplight or two, and you know, I heard about it, I heard that football out there, but I, you know, I finally, you know, somehow stumbled this side of the river, in fact, I'm the west side, which by now I can't daughter. And it was a very different place when I first started here, we had a much smaller operation, very different staff, but this has been my home for, I mean, I'm not, I've physically lived here, but you know, I've come to this building almost every day for almost, I guess, thirteen years, full-time, and you know, I've, if I had not had an opportunity to call out of the sky, I would still happily be here probably for another seventeen, twenty years. So I think you're in great shape, I think your staff is fantastic, I think you've got new people coming on board that are also excellent, that I think are gonna continue all the progress that we've had. You've got great leadership on the council right now. Now, like I said, you know, if, if this thing hadn't just fallen out of the sky, I think I would happily work here for one time. I've been, you know, more than impressed with Greg, he believes we're on board, it's all been excellent, you're in great hands, so I doubt somebody else is wrong.
That little dock in the road you passed, we're the fastest growing city here in this whole area, right? And all of the, that's something to be proud of, you have a big hand in that, and.
There was, there was growth here when I started, but yeah, I've seen a lot. I'm blown away, everything over in that, what used to be a field, it's now our, you know, Galleria, that has been blown up. You know, great partner we brought in for, for everything we're doing. It's really not gonna get different from what was here when I started, and you know, I just, I couldn't be more thankful, especially to the staff I've worked with over the years, we really are a family here, and you know, it, the hardest part has been, you know, walk away from now, but I know they probably don't feel that way, but if they really think about it, it'll be okay.
I said a couple of weeks ago, when you get home, say just come on back.
Well, you, I've managed to welcome myself back in here to some degree, it's all, it needs to be, it's got to be a light season, so I have a feeling to do that. And we're gonna find somebody good to replace you there, so, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. So my eyes are. We received your, your presentation with regret, being your last, but thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Sidney Castle. This item is a consideration of the purchase of a Laserfish plant proposal. The city guard has not yet implemented a technological, technology solution for document storage or record management for public document dissemination. Current methods heavily rely on hard copies and limited digital scans stored on the city servers, impacted efficiency, network storage, and accessibility. These efficiencies highlight a critical need for our citywide electronic content management system to improve document durability, storage, and retrieval. Laserfish is a fully electronic document management solution to manage, appear, and share information. Laserfish is a cloud-based solution for storage, search, and retrieval for city records, allowing users to access files in seconds. Laserfish is not, cannot be purchased directly through the developer and must be purchased from an authorized vendor. Staff reached out to multiple vendors with limited response. Modified logic has authorized Laserfish's seller with over twenty years of experience and has proven record of providing the highest level of support and exceptional services for Laserfish clients across multiple industries. Professional services will include initial planning, configuration for electronic record storage, building workflow rules for automated document filing, security setup, testing, knowledge transfer, and training. Additionally, the city currently has historic records that have yet to be scanned and are being kept in areas that are not conducive to the proper storage of documents. These records can be imported into Laserfish from multiple city departments, preferably starting with the city clerk's office, human resources, and news report. The process includes document scanning, indexing, and integration into Laserfish software, creating up space for the city's internal services, servers, and facilitating a shift towards a centralized document management system. So Laserfish has a special pricing for municipalities with populations less than ten thousand. The proposal includes the following software and services. Sixty hours, first of all, the rate is three thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars, and that includes, with a four percent discount, is three thousand one twenty-four eighty. So it'll include professional services to help get set up. That is a majority of the cost for eight thousand six hundred and forty dollars. And while those are services to help get things set up, it does not include manual labor to help scan those documents, either on us or, or extra hired help on the side. And then there's a support agreement annual for four hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-two cents, which are a total of twelve thousand two thirty-three fifty-two. This does include a four percent discount for software licensing that is based on Modified Logic's contract with Purchasing Cooperative at Green Bush, two-two-point-nine tax situation. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Modified Logic for the purchase and implementation of Laserfish document management software and document preservation services for an amount not to exceed twelve thousand two thirty-three fifty-two, and I'm looking for questions.
This is a virtual chair.
It is a process, so it will take a while to get it set up.
You know, my experience in banking over the years, in the last seventeen years, in terms of doing exams, in the last, during COVID, we were doing exams without going in banks because they had all their documents, you know, in electronic format. And in terms of efficiency, in terms of being able to find things, you know, you don't have to worry about things being misfiled, but it's, the transition's the painful part, so, but we'll get through this transition, and then going forward, this will make it much easier to find things, and I think.
It will also help with retention schedules, so once it's scanned into the system, it'll be set up on the retention schedule, so it will notify us when those documents are being destroyed.
Questions?
Yeah, this is, this is the shovel I'm keeping scurrying with.
Turn me into a virtual. I want to make a motion to approve this, this is a good thing.
Yeah, this is great. I make a motion to approve not to exceed twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-two cents.
Can you make a motion? Over seconds, all those who care to say aye.
Aye.
If you carries. Thank you, I appreciate it. Craig, I don't know, it's, it's TD, we're gonna do some car shopping here, Sam.
Oh, I wish I would've, I'd go for a buck.
I'd love four bucks, but Matt has the last edition items. The last thought here.
We're going to bring Craig up for a debate, so.
So tonight I came to you and asked for the replacement of two patrol vehicles to make Matt happy instead of looking at Lincoln Navigators, I look at Chevy Totos. So the current police fleet consists of fourteen police equipped vehicles and one animal controlled vehicle. That vehicle has two dog kennels in it for transporting other dogs. This provides one patrol vehicle for each police officer and one ACO truck for an ACO physician. That will like to obtain at the end of this year, the first of next year. Twenty twenty-four budget has a hundred and thirty thousand budget for fleet purchase. As part of the vehicle replacement plan, remove high mileage vehicles and continue a reliable state fleet for the vehicles. We attempt to replace at least two vehicles each year. Vehicles thirty and thirty-six are the replacement point. Thirty has a hundred and twenty-four thousand miles on it, thirty-six has seven thousand miles on it. Even though it's not over a hundred thousand, that's the screen we're replacing right now. If you were to drive it, it screams at other noises. But it is going to start running quickly if not replaced. So we're migrating all the street patrol vehicles to the Chevy Tahoe use package based on just their functionality and their durability. As some council members can experience when you did your eye longs, we have some taller officers. It's going to be much more comfortable than a Charger. So located two new Tahos, each priced at thirty-five thousand. For both Tahos made patrol ready, costs include the upfitted, painted, graphics, and tending. That would be one sixty-two, seven twenty-six. That's option A. That doesn't include the cost of each of those two vehicles getting a new laptop docking station and a radar again, both of which, those set in the heat, those are computer equipment, they take a toll. You wouldn't prefer us using good radar equipment that's more accurate and more reliable rather than older equipment. So to add those two pieces of equipment to the two vehicles, that's an additional nine thousand dollars. Making that total for option B of the two vehicles with that equipment, that total cost would be a hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. With a budget difference from the budget of a hundred and thirty thousand of forty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six. So that difference can be drawn from, as Matt said earlier, the equipment reserve. Maybe at the end of the budget year, depending on how much money we have left over in our budget, we can not take so much away. So my recommendation, there is option A, that doesn't replace the docking station or the radars. Option B is what I would prefer and what I would recommend. For the City Council to approve the purchase of two Chevy Tahos upfitted, painted, graphics, new radar, laptop, docking system, not to exceed a hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. Do you have any questions?
So.
I would like you to drive it one day if that's.
Ooh, I wasn't even going to ask, but he said it. Y'all heard that.
I think we need to move that cancel.
That's operational.
Chief said.
I'll leave the ride alone. Okay, so when we, like, this one that has seventy thousand miles on it.
Yes.
What happens to it next?
It'll be sold. Currently we have three vehicles that are being sold right now. They're on Purple Wave.
And what? Sorry, go ahead.
We have three vehicles right now that are being sold that we've replaced from last year. They've finally made it to where Purple Wave is selling them. They're auctioning right now. It's purplewave.com. You can, you can go on there and we get a few thousand dollars out of it. With it only having seventy thousand dollars and it looks legitimate. It's going to make someone's patrol fleet increase potentially.
Okay, so these gets hold the other PBs usually?
Usually, yes. Because we're going to leave the cage in it.
Okay.
The lights, all the emergency equipment is removed.
Okay.
Our graphics are removed, so.
How hard is it to take that? Yeah, well, I'm just curious, how hard is it to take that cage off?
It's not hard.
You want to make a bid?
No, I've just got, I've just got this, listen, I've just got this great idea. If we could strip everything out of the back, take the logo off the sides, slap the City Godder logo on it, then we got a new, or a new big Tahoe for then the whole public works stuff around there. It's only got seventy thousand miles on it.
Charger.
Oh, this is a Charger?
Charger.
I can expect some work up in that since time. That makes a lot more sense. I thought it was like, like old Tahoe, we were hard to get in.
And ideally, we've kind of, well, we did, we did that with a few Tahos. We provide public works to increase their fleet.
Yeah.
And they got use out of them. However, it's not the most specific vehicle that gives them the most benefit from what they do day in, they out, hauling things, pulling things.
I bet one of the public works guys would advocate for a Charger to haul their stuff around. You could stick some of the stuff out like.
It's had a lot of miles, hard miles on it.
Are the docking systems like upgraded or something? That one, they're not interchangeable?
They are interchangeable, and that's what we've experienced and that's what we've done historically. However, we've just seen recently, just especially last year with the heat that we had, that really hurt a lot of them. And it's computers and it's equipment. And it took a toll on them, so we've had to replace them here and there. I think it's just almost cleaner and more.
New vehicle.
Exactly.
So how many hours does an average police car, hours? You know, I mean, because they sit there and run all the time.
I don't know, it's, they run more.
It might be seventy thousand miles, but that's.
They run more on days like today, but I don't keep track of the hours.
Yeah, that's what's hard, is the hours.
I don't know. They'll get the money. I think our CFO said we have plenty of money or something.
I think we always want to support our boys and girls as much as we can, so. I'm not too, unless you, I'll make a motion. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of two Chevrolet Tahos upfitted, painted with graphics, including a new radar and laptop docking system, not to exceed a hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Make a motion. Right second, all those who care to say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can you go back on slide there, chief? I like how you put the font on option B larger than.
Two. Oh, yeah. Weird.
And yes, we do expect a ride.
I caught that one.
Oh, yeah. We need a ride longer.
Even the prisoners will be more comfortable.
I'm going to invite City Minister Craig Preset to come up and just, we're going to tag team this week. We had a meeting last week with KDOT to discuss the R cut from the South Frontage Road. Now that it's opened up. One of my concerns has been, I haven't been able to find a, an R cut that has a frontage road attached to it within thirty or forty feet. And I think it's created some challenges. And so we've started a dialogue with them. And then we've got some other things to talk about too. I'll, we'll kind of tag teams, so tag your head.
Sure, so, you know, we'd like to start meeting with them a few times a year. And I think in the past, it's been more of a as needed basis. And in the more recent past, it's probably been a lot for a very specific reason because we've had so many active projects with them going on, whether it was frontage road realignment or the R cut that just got wrapped up. So, you know, the R cut's been open a week now. There's obviously some, a bit of a learning curve there. And it's a bit of a unique traffic flow situation, not one that we see. I know there's an R cut in Wyandotte County, and there's going to be another one on two fifty-four, and another one on Highway fifty. So they're coming. It's becoming a more acceptable, acceptable way to route traffic in these pain point areas. But what makes RGD is it's an R cut with frontage roads and it's lighted. So some of the concern that we've heard in the last couple of days, one of them being that the southbound traffic on Crown Drive does not have to stop. Just kind of goes right through the R cut. There is kind of a checkerboard area there where they're not supposed to queue up if there's already cars in front of them. So that's been a little bit of a cause for concern. And then there's the stop signs for the east-west traffic on the South Frontage Road. It's kind of new to folks to have stop signs there. They will have flashing stoplights. They just have a bit of a shipment issue, I'm told. So those stop signs, excuse me, lights. Those stop signs will have the red flashing around the octagon there on the east-west bound South Frontage Road. And then there's a little yellow placard that says, "Through traffic does not stop." So it's going to take some time. Thankfully, not going to have any accidents there yet. Luckily, it's a low speed area, so as long as folks are paying attention, we have a good line of sight, we should be okay. There's a couple of trees there that run north and south on the east side of Crown Drive that, on the furthest two or three trees to the north there, we're going to be, we'll probably drop those and then come back later if we have time and get them trimmed and hauled off. But get those dropped to help with the line of sight. So that was kind of the topic of conversation. We just wanted to know, KDOT, we wanted KDOT to be aware that, you know, hey, this is open. Here's some of the feedback we're getting. Want you guys to kind of keep tabs on this with us. So that was part of our conversation. We talked about a couple of strategies that could be implemented, should there be, you know, more serious issues there. Hopefully, none of those arise. Some of those strategies are ones that were actually discussed during the preliminary concept engineering process, from what I'm told. But, so that's, that's the R cut. We also talked with them about reshaping and cutting and maintaining their right of way, their ditches, their stormwater infrastructure. If you remember, right around the time I started, beginning of last year, we got really hot and heavy on trying to address the stormwater maintenance issues as well as some capital projects or hotspots that we identified. A lot of that has been along the Kellogg corridor there. We extended the project area of the R cut, so we reshaped a lot of the ditch along there already. And then we asked KDOT if they would partner on going out even further. They said, no, we have a maintenance crew that'll take care of that. I actually received an email from our city planner, maybe a day or two ago. She forwarded an email to me saying that KDOT had so quickly responded to the mayor and his meeting that they would have their maintenance crew out to start reshaping one of those ditch areas as soon as next week. And then they would come back and do the other area as soon as the North Frontage Road project is done. So we should see some real improvements for our drainage infrastructure just from some of those maintenance projects. And we've got some others too that are in the KDOT corridor, namely the one where we have that tree road that runs north there towards Cloverleaf, if you're familiar. And that's also a drainage event that we haven't been able to keep up with, so we'll get that taken care of as well. We spoke with them about the right of way maintenance as far as the landscaping is concerned and had some conversation about perhaps admitting our connecting leak agreement with them, whereas perhaps the city would take care of the mowing so long as KDOT would be willing to provide us the funding to do so. So we'd kind of funnel it through to our contractors that mow. That way, we can control the appearance and the aesthetic to the front door of our community. It was not mowed until a week or so ago due to the R cut project. They won't mow if there's an active construction project going on, so we learn. But typically, they're not allowed to mow till after the moral weekend anyhow. So those are a few items. We also discussed one, their turn lanes project. I've got an email in my inbox right now about five documents I got assigned to get that one out of the starting blocks. It's, all the engineering's done. I don't believe they let it forbid yet, but I'm hopeful that that project will kick off as soon as we get done with the North Frontage Road. So maybe sometime in the middle to late fall, so. We're going to keep meeting with them. I really like the district area manager. I had a great experience working with them in the community I served previously. They just shifted him to our district. I was so impressed with his responsiveness. I mean, we just met on Tuesday and here we are less than a week later and we're getting action on some of the items that we brought to their attention. So hopefully, we can keep that up. Mayor, that's all I have to share about it.
Okay, I'll mention a couple of other things. We, when we started talking about some of these things, we were thinking about sending a letter. And I ran into the KDOT representative at the Wong Po meeting. I thought, you know, it's a lot better to visit with people in person. And so kind of made that connection with them. Tina Powell has worked with these gentlemen, so there's relationships and ties there. And I think we just want to keep a positive, open relationship with them. We talked in general terms about speed limits. I have some concerns from one hundred ninety-ninth going west that, you know, we're just about to draw Main Street across to the north side and tie into Rustic Creek. Depending on how you count, you know, the old Popper Drive addition, that's the original J turn because they can't turn east, they've got to go west to go east coming out of that subdivision. Probably something that should have been addressed a long time ago too. And I think they were really responsive to the fact that, I think they understand and see that half of our community is now on the other side of the highway. So, I mean, I, I'd like to see that speed limit slowed down in various degrees from one hundred and sixty-seven past two hundred and fifteen. We opened that subdivision, you know, people talked about all the trucks coming out of Dylan's. This is a different place than it was twenty years ago. The traffic's different, the amount of traffic. Just, you know, ten in cheek, I just, you know, mentioned, you know, you can't drive through Kingman going fifty miles an hour. Can't drive through Pratt going fifty. And then they mentioned, well, you know, we are going to put a bypass around Kingman. I said, well, it'll probably be twenty-five or thirty years before we get a bypass around Godder or get the flyover done that was talked about in two thousand, two thousand one. So I, I think they're going to be sensitive to not only needs of the travelers because they have a desire too to keep the traffic flowing from El Cart, you know, to Baxter Springs without stopping. But we live here too, and I think there's going to be a balance with the speed limits and traffic. Talked a little bit just internally about putting some striping down Crown Drive as those cars come out of, off the highway two by two. And hopefully that'll help maintain that. Does it become which lane I'm in or take my hat out of the middle like my father-in-law used to do? And then, I guess, you know, the last thing was, was one other thing I want to mention. Just, I just wish people in this next thirty days would just be a little kinder, be a little patient. You know, some of the vitriol and things on, you know, everybody gets really brave when they want to complain about things. But everyone in here has the best interest of our community at heart. We stepped in this R cut situation in the middle of the movie. But the preliminary work that was done on this started back in two thousand and eighteen. The Stevens weren't involved in that. Those of us up here weren't involved in that. But now that it's come to fruition, it's our responsibility to manage it. And we're going to do that. And so I just want people to understand that this meeting took place last week, that we're going to be serious about dialoguing and communicating with KDOT to represent the community of Godder's best interests and to advocate for our citizens. And the people that look at that today and say, that's a waste, that eight, ten years down the road, Crown Drive goes all the way through to Pawnee, ties into our industrial park, truck traffic doesn't move on one hundred ninety-ninth anymore. That Galleria is full. We, we've already bought what we plotted with housing developments and doubled this, our community. And the infrastructure that's in place is going to allow that retail area to develop. And having that stretch of road in the future is going to be probably the, one of the main traffic areas to our community. It's not where you start, it's where you finish. So thank you, just take a look and try to think, and I'm talking to everybody that's probably won't hear this. But try to think about what are things going to look like in five years or ten years from now. Have a little vision. We want to have some foresight. That's part of what we're doing. We stepped involved, we're involved in this in the middle of the movie. And we'll step out and somebody else will step in. And I think we all are in agreement that we want to do things to make things better. So we're going to leave things better than where we think. So I just would ask people to be patient. And if you can't say anything nice, my dad said this to me a thousand times. If you can't say anything nice, son, don't say anything at all. Just be quiet and move on. And sometimes I think that, I read some of the stuff, I think, and my wife accuses me sometimes of being stuck between a seventh and an eighth grader. I'm thinking, where are these folks stuck? So be positive. And if you really want to complain, come in and talk to Craig. Come in and I'll, I'll visit with you. I mean, get the facts straight, understand what you're talking about, get the full picture. Then, then let's have an adult disagreement. Let's, we can agree to disagree without being mean spirited and without being ugly. It's really easy to hide behind a keyboard, but it just gets a little awkward. That was the last thing I wanted to say. That was the last thing I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You're next again. We'll move it on.
I wanna set a sidebar real quick. You mentioned the speed on Kellogg, and maybe in the next administrative report, I wanna talk a little bit more about, you know, what that looks like and why it's not just as simple as a half inch wrench and a couple bolts and nuts. And I have insight from my colleague, city engineer, public works director that can help me provide that analysis. But there are some ways that we can organically calm the traffic that could help us get the speed lowered, and we'll talk about those more in the future. Anyway, here, the city administrative report on local mayor and city council. It's my first time to officially visit with you tonight here at the podium, and I appreciate the opportunity. This joint city council on planning commission meeting, it will occur on July 8th. I think the language included here is a little speculative after I read it a second time. We do have that scheduled, it's gonna be July 8th, so a week from tonight, same times our council meetings typically are, 7:00 PM. We'll have the tables all set up for everyone. We're gonna have the keynote address, which will be an analysis of the housing study that we just got a week or two ago. We've caught a couple clerical errors in that since we first sent it out, and that's been addressed. So, and then there will be an opportunity for some open dialogue amongst the planning commission and city council. It's very fruitful to have what we call a by-gov meeting. Sometimes they do tri-gov meetings, where you have the, you know, the school district and the council, and maybe a county come together. In this instance, it's the by-gov, it's the planning commission, and the city council. But just to get together once or twice and kind of align ourselves, so that'll be the purpose of this. It'll be the joint meeting, the planning commission will also have its own separate meeting that night. I'm not quite sure what the sequencing on that will be, but they will have one case, at least to this point, that they will be adjudicating, for lack of a better term. So, that will happen as well. So, it'll be the joint meeting, and then they'll have their own meeting, too. Councils welcome to stay and be a part of that. The list, yes, sir, 7:00 PM, a week from today.
Joy.
Yes. Lianier Park Playground, so city staff are still working on that, and I anticipate that next council meeting, or perhaps first in August, we'll have that buttoned up. One of the things that my colleague, Bert Remberg, shares with me is that it's not as easy to go and get competitive bids for playground equipment. He used the word accessibility, meaning that you get a lot of these same suppliers and same companies, of the same employees working for them. And so, when you try to contact a different employer, you're getting the same person that's representing the one that you're wanting to competitively bid against. So, we might not have, you know, three or four competitive quotes. I'm hoping that we can at least have another one to match against what we have. The wayfinding signage, our assistant city administrators comprise the RFP to fabricate and install 14 wayfinding signs in high-traffic areas around town. These will likely be presented to council in the near future. The stormwater assessment, we've been promoting this one for a few months now, but it's taken a while to get, you know, things we need in place to be able to properly implement this project. I know that the city engineers team has been out surveying over the last week or two, so we should be able to bid out a project or two, I would think, in the next council meeting or so. I feel like we're a lot closer now than we were, perhaps even a week ago. And then, of course, there's a charter ordinance that we put together. Almost all the communities in the Cedric County ring, as the mayor calls it, have stormwater management fees, which is how they're able to properly maintain their stormwater infrastructure. We have not had one historically. We need one, so we can pay for these projects that will mitigate flooding and ensure that, you know, we have health and sanitation things in place to keep stormwater from accumulating and allowing it to move on its, to its final destination. Harland's team, working on designing the rural water district for cross-connection. I'll tell you what, we've had those guys really busy with all of our drove. And so, hopefully, we can get that one buffed up on the totem pole of priorities. And he also works with the rural water district, so that creates some good integration there for us to take that on as a team. Budget workshops looking ahead, tonight we have the enterprise funds. At the next council meeting, we'll have the street and special revenue funds, so you'll get your first glimpse of the capital street projects. We've kind of named it the five-year plan. It could be longer or shorter, but we're hoping to do near the same amount of road work this year, or next year and the year after, and a few subsequent to that, as we did this year, to get caught up on our road improvements. So, continue to work on the CIP. We do have the North Park Open House Number Two. That's gonna be next week on Wednesday from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM at the Goddard Community Center. This is gonna be, if you're at the last one, that one was more of a one-way presentation format. This is gonna be a lot more interactive. The North Park Committee jumped in a rental and went up to Kansas City, toured the whole park system up there. There's a lot of unique amenities at those parks that we just don't see down here in our system. Some of us have visited the park system in the Tulsa area. We're trying to bring park amenities here and some amenities here that you can't see in other areas of Cedric County. We want this to nominally be a very, very special place for our community, but we want it to be so great that others may travel and come visit it as well. We are engaging with the community in a special way, allowing them to come in and vote and rank three or four different areas of the park. For each of these three or four areas, there'll be two or three options that they can vote on. So, it's gonna be really cool. I mean, I'm hoping that a lot of people will get involved and be able to say, once this thing is built, that, yeah, I voted for that piece of equipment, and now I, myself or my child, is getting to enjoy it. So, if you haven't already, please visit the North Park Story Map. I did not include the link, but if you go to the City of Goddard website and click on the community tab, you will see a picture of the North Park master plan. You click on that, it'll take you to the story map. Part of our community engagement for North Park, the school district has been so kind to obliging, allowing us to be a part of the scheduled events at their USD 265 community retreat on July 26th. So, that's gonna allow us the opportunity to get in front of several hundred of our stakeholders that we may not otherwise be able to see, and take 15 minutes or so to present to them the North Park project, the process, where we're at. And then we're even gonna be able to allow them to rank these few different areas and few different amenities, just as we're gonna do with the open house. So, I wanna be able to come to council with our North Park Committee and say, this is what our citizens told us that they wanted, they voted on this, we went very in-depth in gathering their feedback, and they were a part in building this awesome park. The City of Goddard will be hosting the Cedric County Area of Cities this event, so I'm open to the public, but I wanna make it known that that's gonna be on Saturday, July 13th, at the Tanami Wildlife Park. And SCAC is basically a conglomerate of elected officials from all these cities in Cedric County, and they come together on a quarterly basis to discuss items that affect the broader region. So, I would love it if we could get as many council people there as possible to put on a good showing for our city, as we are the host. And we only do that every few years, because they rotate it around the 19 cities in Cedric County. CFO vacancy and the hiring process, we've got interviews tomorrow and Wednesday. We've got some highly qualified applicants, and hopeful that perhaps we can make a selection sometime this month. So, we're gonna be pretty diligent, though. And usually, for senior staff positions, we interview these folks twice, and we even have to come back a third time and have an informal lunch with them, just to make sure the vibe's right, and they're gonna fit in culturally. Sometimes you can glean things in that informal setting that you don't during a formal interview. It's kind of a process I like to follow. Hopefully, maybe first meeting in August, we'll be announcing our hiring for that vacancy. The monument entry signage, Ryan advertised the RFP. I believe the deadline is sometime in August, and once we get those in, we'll deliver a recommendation to the governing body. That's a CIP item, one that we may look to budget for next year. So, excited about that. Kind of gives, keeps us that small-town vibe and lets folks know when they enter our city limits. The Main Street Market and National Night Out, July Main Street Market, Vice Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, Sunday, July 14th, from 2:30 to 5:30 PM?
Two to five.
Two to 5:00 PM.
Yes, sir.
Glad I asked. Were you just waiting to correct me?
Yep.
Don't wonder where you're giving me the sideline.
Please do not stick around until 2:30, I want to go home. Or 5:30, sorry.
Two to 5:00 PM. Two to 5:00 PM. Make a mental note. Then we have National Night Out coming up on August 9th, 6:00 PM, at Lianier Park. Another event that I wanna bring folks' attention, the Cedric County Commission Election Forum, hosted by the Goddard Chamber. That's gonna be on July 11th, Thursday, next week, from 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM. Those are held at Pathway Church. You need to RSVP, go to the Chamber website, meet RSVP by the 8th, so early next week. Let me jump back up here. Future agenda items, we discuss the stormwater projects and stormwater management fee, that'll be the charter ordinance, the water rate adjustment was discussed tonight, 167th Edition petitions over free South petitions, further budget workshops, the wayfinding signage, and then we'll have the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate resolution. Couple of items I scratched in to close. Councilman Collins brought this up earlier, but Wichita area metro planning organization just recently completed a research initiative with the, here's another acronym for you, CEDVR, Center for Economic Development and Business Research, Wichita State University. And they named the City of Goddard as the fastest-growing city in Cedric County, once they wrapped up that research. And so, I think that the staff and the governing body and the citizens should be proud that, you know, we're taking home that claim, at least for now. And that's created a lot of needs in public infrastructure projects that we are feverishly working on and continuing to move forward with. Last but not least, my colleague, Matt Lawn, our outgoing CFO, really appreciate the time that you guys wanted him to, to kind of give us a nice goodbye and the compliment you gave to him. And I also wanted you to know that we're gonna be celebrating him on Wednesday of this week with a luncheon. Matt, you were here during my first go-around, and you're here again, you're part of the reason I wanted to come back. I appreciate your mentorship, learning from you, being able to know that things are in good shape in your area, which is a very important area to us, and I know the rest of city staff would likely agree with me. So, I'm excited to celebrate you on Wednesday.
Thank you.
That's all I got?
Great, thank you. Got any Bobby comments? Do you want to start?
Well, thank you, Senator Boise, for coming and introducing yourself and showing us who you are, and offering to be helpful to us and our community, and we're looking forward to working with you. Kevin, thanks for your thorough explanation of all the things. It does help the process for us, so I appreciate that. And I'm excited about Goddard's journey, and that we have a lot of good things coming on, and, fun.
You're next. First of all, Senator Boise, thank you so much for being here. You've already done so much for our community, and we appreciate that. To know that the people representing us in Topeka actually know who we are and don't just know where we are is very much so appreciated. So, thank you for showing up tonight and being able to actually show your face in local government. Not a whole lot tonight. I just wanted to thank all of you. Our city staff are just incredible at what they do. You can see it in every meeting, when these guys get up and are so well-prepared and get things done so quickly. I know, we've talked about wayfinding signs for a while, and then Ryan gets here and gets it done. So, thank you so much for that. Thank you to all of you for what you're doing. Matt, we deeply appreciate you. I only got to work with you for, you know, a year and a half or so, but your knowledge and understanding just blows me away. I'm still trying to do multiplication, but I don't even count that. Yeah, oh, man. It's been fun. Sorry the kids don't suck at football. That's all right. Boom or shooter. Thank you. Genuinely, thank you so much for everything you've done. Like, I get to raise my kids in an incredible community because of the efforts that you've put in these last, I mean, 15, nearly 15 years. And I am so very thankful for the city that you helped build. So, good luck in everything. Don't be afraid to come home when you need to. Mike also works here. That's it.
What?
Oh, it's a fine turn. No, I think they said enough, but I did see a few of your finds on, out there on the carter, I think, right? Wherever they're from. So, are you from garden plumbing?
Colvis.
Colvis. Well, thank you for coming, and thank you, staff. Do a good job.
Albert?
Yeah, it's easy going last, so I just did everything they said. Senator, thank you for being here. I know you've got our back. Matt, we love you, staff, but that's your job. On to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, Senator, look forward to working with you in the future. I wish you the best. Fourth of July weekend, be careful with your fireworks. I know my grandkids are gonna be excited when they come up here tomorrow morning, because the excavator, the dirt mover, they dug out from walnut to screws. They threw down the mat, and they rocked 90% of it, they did that. You know, so, I've got a video of about nine minutes of them digging up right from the driveway, so you'll have fun doing that. So, progress, sometimes it's painful, it takes time. It was interesting, when they did pull up, you know, the old asphalt, that there was no base. I mean, when that street was originally set, it's probably true of the other streets in all of Goddard, they just smoothed the dirt out and put some asphalt back. So, that might have been 70 years ago. I don't know, maybe we have to dig through the records and see what was actually painted.
It's 25-plus, I would really have to dig.
I've been here for 27, so it's been a while. But anyway, progress is good. I appreciate the city staff's efforts. I know it's hard, sometimes you guys are out working in the heat, your career, Brooke, so just make sure everybody, you know, drinks plenty of water, stay hydrated, Coach James always reminds us. Anyway, that's all I have. I'll seek to entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
He makes a motion. Everybody's second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Keep it moving.
We're gonna go.
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 We're gonna go.